It's five o'clock, so we'll start working on our work session here. We do have a agenda, however, on work sessions. There's no need for any motions or... And there won't be any voting. Everything, if we make any decisions, it'll go right to the next regular board meeting. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate the input of our citizens. On our work session tonight, the very first thing on the list is the town Hermosa media policy. And this has been brought up that... It's incorrectly written by, not by us, but by the state. However, I don't really want to take the state on. I don't believe that's our job. So I think we just need it approved or not approved and changed to what we need it to be for, if we need any changes for our town. The biggest thing on section one on this is that only one person at this time is designated as an authorized spokesperson for the town. And it says, "Therefore, if you receive contact from the media, advise them that you cannot comment and refer them to the person that is." So I think that's one of the biggest things right there. It gives, um, we can have a, um, a vote again on who we think it should, or a discussion on who we think it should be. Right now, it's Kel. I don't have a problem with that myself. I guess, um, anybody can start. Comments? Questions?
I don't really want to go first, but nobody else has anything.
Yeah, go ahead then.
Um, no, I think, so I do think it's good to have somebody. And I don't think there's any reason to have anybody other than Kel. He's very straightforward, well-spoken, all that. But, um, it's very generic. It's, alright, if you're going to contact anybody from the board, then they have to say, "No, you've got to call him." And that's fine in the context of anything that's town policy, I think. Or if, for whatever reason, a media person wants an opinion on something that's considered agreed upon by the board. And I think that's really how that would be if it was being handled appropriately, alright? I think that's good. So I think if anything, maybe expand the wording of that to... Or refine the wording to make it clear that we're looking, that that applies to general perspective of the town itself, the board as a whole, things like that. If that sounds fair. Because the last meeting, I think, where I kind of settled to after our discussion was, I feel like we should, we should break it down to where it's a different situation to speak from your personal opinion versus your position as an individual trustee versus trying to represent the entire board. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, I like that. It's a clearer...
Yeah.
Instruction as to what is and isn't permissible and then kind of the guardrail, so to speak, of, you know, how, how we would like the trustees to behave.
Yeah. And so like as an example, right? Like if there was a question about the lagoon project, that's like something that's going on townwide. Alright, where is it at currently, kind of thing? How is our progress going? Then you would be the person to contact. Where that would be different than say, oh, what do you, what is your personal, or what is your opinion as a trustee on how, you know, like that differentiation. Does that sound fair?
Yep. I agree with that.
A lot of this too, um, goes to, uh, um, emergency situations. And in, in any emergency situation for the town, any, uh, whatever, flood, tornado...
That's nasty.
Any, I know, I'm knocking on wood when I say these things. I, I, I know. But, um, that needs to be, um, one person. Uh, decisions made and if those kind of things happen, it's obvious that we'll all have to meet up here to the office, get a quick, you know, briefing on what's happening. And then that person should be the only person that speaks in, in emergency situations.
Right.
So...
And thinking about it like that, at that point, right? They are, whoever's speaking to the media is essentially speaking on behalf of the whole town.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. So Kel, are you okay with being the spokesperson for the media?
Sure.
So, I mean, where else are you at there, Aaron? Anything, so one's fine if we add those additions.
Yeah.
Two?
Um, that's just seems a little bit...
Generic.
If referring to the media, or does it notify your immediate supervisor? Who has a supervisor as far as a trustee? I mean, we don't really have.
No, but the, so if you want to just make that and, and contact everybody. If, or you want to make a person for them to contact everybody so that the media person's not having to. It, I, I believe that it's important that each member knows that this is happening too.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
For contact, I, I think it needs to be done, you know?
So like if you're contacted by media, then make sure all the other board members are aware.
Trustees know about it, yes.
And then for, if an employee is con, like if, if Terry's, is asked a question, she just needs to let us know, "Hey, I asked a question."
Yep.
"Or I was asked a question," yeah, so...
So in a, if we're going to have a sheet or a policy, and we probably should have this, um, at our, each of ours disposal, we make sure everybody has everybody's number so they can be contacted, which I have everybody's now, I'm sure everybody else does too, but... You don't have Aaron's? Well...
I'll text you my name.
I don't want your name, I want your number.
So as far as two goes, um, I mean, it's, instead of, in addition to referring members, because that, referring the members, that's kind of going to be covered in one. Notify other board members of the, uh, that you've been contacted in the nature of the communication, something like that.
Yep, all other.
Media representatives, that you cannot comment. That you cannot comment.
So who, who wrote this up? This is South Dakota. And they did, public alliance. Yeah, did this.
Insurance company.
Yeah, that's the insurance company. They're just trying to, um, protect us and, and we should, we should appreciate that. Yeah, some of it's kind of unnecessary, yes.
You cannot comment. And so media representatives will understand that you cannot comment. To elaborate on that. On behalf... Cannot express your own opinion as the opinion of the entire board. That you need to clarify.
So then what if a citizen approaches the media and says they want to give their comment? That's, that's out of our control. That's, they have every right to say and to speak to the media any, anytime they want. That's, and that's freedom of speech, and we're happy for that, so, um, yep.
And to that end, you know, in situations like that, if we have this policy in place, it's basically a stone wall of communication, then, you know, if a media person hears from a citizen and then wants our input, this kind of could be construed as an obstacle to that.
Well...
In a way, right, like?
I don't, I don't, I don't see it as an obstacle. I just see it as, you know, I think that if, if a citizen comments on something that is, I would expect the media to definitely contact the board, the town. And, um, and if they're wanting our personal opinions, then they'll make those calls too, you know? I mean, it's, they're used to that. The media, they know how to do their job. We just have to know how to do ours. So...
On behalf of...
So what do we have to do with it?
I think four is probably as good as it can be, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. If something happens, make sure everybody's aware.
Yep.
Into what is a natural urge to be helpful if you are, that's condescending and patronizing. That's a completely unnecessary statement.
That's a, it's a... A generational thing between your age group and our age group, I would say, sorry.
Urge to be helpful.
Don't be helpful.
We're the smarter ones.
You should be friendly and not advising members of the media that you are not... Not able to contact on behalf of... Uh, seven, do not explain or discuss any occurrence or event with media which could be perceived as a misrepresentation or as representing the...
Again, i- in my opinion, that's just a, another, they're duplicating the no comment. Um, explaining it through different ways. And, and I just, that's just for our benefit that they are trying to do that. So...
I think seven needs to just entirely go then. I mean, no, just flatline no comment isn't appropriate, given the other criticisms we're making.
If you are present, I'm sorry, I'm all the way down to nine here. If you are present during executive session where litigation or claims are discussed, please keep in mind that executive sessions are privileged, that no record is made of these discussions, and that anyone present is absolutely forbidden to discuss the content of the conversation which occurs during the course of an executive session.
That's probably the most well-written paragraph in the whole thing. That's pretty much, and to the, to that, if, if, if anything, I mean, then we have the code of conduct. So really, I mean, if you're doing something along those lines, then I think you're already to the point of violating your code of conduct there. That's it.
So eight was...
As an official.
Same, I mean, it's all, it's all just repetitious, but like I said, they're trying to do it to protect us and, and I think it's...
Yeah, I think eight is kind of points, like what I got on, is this looks like a document that you would have at a company that doesn't want employees speaking on behalf, rather than a government agency.
Rather than a government.
Right, and that's really kind of eight, very much paints that as a, as what this is really more geared toward.
And at the same time, we do have a few employees.
Right.
And, and we need to make sure that they have the same information that we have. So...
I think if, if, um... If we have that differentiation clear between personal, trustee, the board as a whole, then employees are really covered by the first two as well. I mean, an employee can, yeah, they can talk to a media about the weather, whatever they want, but if they're speaking from an official position, they need to make sure that...
So at the bottom, this does say it's a sample media policy and should be treated like other policies your entity may have in use, so that's just the... Just of keeping it, are you, you getting it here? Have you got questions?
Well, is somebody going to rewrite this and then present it to the board next week so we can approve it?
Looking right at me, yeah.
Looking at you, Aaron.
Should I do that? Should I just, should we do this like we did, um...
If you're willing to rewrite it.
Write it up, circulate it, and see how everybody feels.
And then give it to us with the packet ahead of time so we can look at it, review it, and then we'll vote on it or whatever at the next meeting, or...
I mean, it's an immediate pressing issue.
It's not an immediate pressing, but it's also something we want to get done so that we, it's off the docket.
Yep. Yeah, I can do that. I feel like one, three, and seven could use a little tweaking. That would make it more appropriate to our situation.
Okay.
Should be good.
Okay. Is everybody alright with that? Kel, do we have to, I mean, does, do we have to approve this and send it back in to...
No.
No. Okay. It's nothing to do with the policy itself.
Well, just our, for our protection in our office.
Yeah, I, I mean, it sounds like, I don't think they would care whether or not we use this one or did our own, as long as there's something in place.
Their recommendation was that we just have one in place. And this was just a sample that they'd given us, so...
Kel, you're alright with that decision? Alright, so we can move forward then. Next item on our agenda is the water ordinance. Terry has provided us with the current and the new was, um, written by Neil?
Yes. And I talked to Neil today, and he said if you guys had any suggestions, he's willing to make corrections. Because this is not set in stone under by any means.
Well, I probably have to go through it again and again, but, um... Dang, these pages just don't flip very well. On the very last page, uh, no, I'm, the top of the last page, um... That needs to be rewritten, the very first sentence in the second paragraph. "A curb stop. Each service shall be provided with a curb stop at the outside edge of the sidewalk." Well, we don't have sidewalks all through town, so that's a no-brainer. We need to, um, that sentence needs to be revised to our town.
Which page are you on, Anna?
Uh, on the very last one.
You did which one you were on?
Uh, yep, the new one, yep.
This is the current one?
That is the current one, yep. And so it's, am I on the right page? One more, I thought it was...
That's not the, that's the second to the last page.
Second to the last page, yeah, last page, front side. So, right here.
That paper's sticky.
I know, it's weird, isn't it?
It won't slide, okay.
So this line needs to be rewritten.
Or just tell them, tell them that and let them come back again with something new?
Pardon me?
We'll just let them know that, and then see what...
Yep.
What they come back with.
I think, I think, yeah. So any of those little things that anybody else caught in, in the rest of the paperwork is, we need to highlight and change.
And it says the same thing under service boxes too.
Service boxes says the same thing.
Great with the sidewalk.
Okay, so the next paragraph down?
Yeah, I was just looking at that.
Just one question more for overall curiosity. Has, uh, has there ever been a consideration of, um, a way to fill people with, with, uh, cisterns and things, with trouble with a truck with a cistern, something like that? For like the folks who live out in the rural and might need a tank of water? Is that ever something that was done in town in the past?
Ye- yes, we have sold water, um, to different people, different areas, different businesses. And, um, we, we at one time had or were putting on, um, something so that we could keep track of how many gallons each person picked up. And, and we still have that check. Okay, and so...
Is that, I didn't see that in here as a, um...
So on the water ordinance also then, we're also going to need that. Um, the sale of to private citizens or companies.
That falls under bulk water.
Under bulk water. Well, that should still be under the, in the, what is that somewhere? The section, uh, disconnection for non-payment, notice of, uh, discontinuance required. I think those are alright. That's where I went, kind of as a thing. Billing and payment, um, that needs to be reworded, the first, first sentence in that. We read the meters on the, on or near the twentieth, and so the fifteenth of the same month does not make sense. So I want to highlight that. Um, in the future, would you try to remember to number the pages so that it's easier for...
So Neil send it to me and I'll put the numbers in.
Thank you.
Because he didn't put any corresponding numbers like our ordinance has on this.
To go back and forth, yeah.
So one of the big things was the, um, the meter ownership. Which section is that? You know, that's been a big, big thing we've talked about.
Yes.
Many, many times. I need to look at that. Cost of pipe curb stop, soft rocks, all over waters. Should be paid by the owner and shall not be included.
We also need to talk about, uh, varying tap fees for developments, if that's what we're going to do or something like that, because I think right now it, um, basically states that all the tap fees are going to be equitable. So if we want to pass some of that development cost on to the developments, then we'll have to address that as well.
Oh, alright, the public works director shall furnish meters up to include two inches, and the applicant shall pay for all larger meters? Is that kind of where, I don't know if that really covers ownership?
Well, as far as ownership goes, I, I'm, I still think that the town should...
That's what it says in here. There's, I don't, I don't know.
They have to pay for it.
Yeah.
Where is that at?
So installed by the town and by the town, is that's what we're all kind of feeling?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know where you're at there, but I'm still trying to find it. Oh, you got it?
Well, this talks about the meters and then the, the city shall be to furnish them and... And they regain control and be responsible for...
She, alright, yeah, yeah, yeah. The city shall retain control and be responsible for the cost.
It's like on the back of the fifth page or something.
I'm going to number these. This time, I'm going to number it.
One, two, three, four, fifth sheet on the back.
Right here, this meter shall be provided by the town and remains the property of the town.
Oh, there's this.
Right above external matters.
It's on another page, alright, because we're here.
Yeah. So we should probably put all that language in one spot. And then reiterate the, uh, meter ownership in different areas too. Which, you know, of course, where it makes sense, but like it would be good in the generally kept section that we stated there.
So we provide them, they pay for them, at least only.
Yeah, not in every case though. Like normal meter replacement is the town's paying for it.
Right, like that's where the, yeah, so it's just the initial investment essentially.
Initial investment, or if it's found that it's due to owner's neglect or damage, then they have to pay for it.
That's good, did you see that in here?
Yeah.
The, uh...
It's right here, review its responsibility for water meter damage. And that's where it makes the, and that's, the end of that section is where it says that the, the meter is provided by the town and remains the property of the town. So they, they explicitly stated it in this section because this is the section that explains when the homeowner is responsible for paying for the meter. But they wanted to make sure that we knew that the meter was stolen by the town, even though that they paid for it.
And so that comes up at the back here on the second one. See, I haven't gotten it numbered yet. It would be page nineteen, and it would be J. It's under the malicious or willful, willful damage to the water system. And, uh, it says, "Any violator upon conviction shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and shall be subject to a penalty of thirty days in jail or a fine as per current fee schedule." So that just tells me that with the fee schedule, we need to make sure that that goes with this. Not to mention the fact that I don't think we can qualify it as a misdemeanor. I mean, it could be way worse. The damage and the cost could be way worse than a misdemeanor. So I think that word needs to be, uh, you need to be... So I think that word needs to be, uh you need to either add.
At least.
At least, or, or something. That needs to be changed in there.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, no, I see your point. That could very quickly be a lot worse.
Yeah, a lot worse.
Anything up on the hill is, that's.
Exactly.
But we probably, that would be somebody else's problem anyway.
Yeah, well, I just noticed it, it's like any little thing that's noticed, you know, we can change. It's easier to do it all at once than think about it three months from now.
Where before?
Here. Yes, Chuck?
I think there is a notation in there on meters that are larger than three quarter. They're considered commercial.
Uh-huh.
Uh, the owner pays for those. We do not furnish the meter that's larger than three quarter. Haven't. If you wanna start doing that, if you're in the school and the store and um some of the commercial accounts, if they're larger than three quarters, they, they're the expensive meters.
Right. So in that part of it, Chuck, would we want to um specify what brand or?
Yes, very definitely because.
Okay.
The reason for that is that we're programmed with major meters and every upgrade we make, those meters are capable of the upgrades. We've made two or three major changes uh in the operation of meters. Numerical to digital to soon satellite.
Soon satellite.
Uh, meters compatible with those um conditions. One of the other things I might mention is if the town is not furnished the meters, it's just no more different. I explained it before, for whatever, any gas meter, electric meter, anything in that. It's our means of calculating how much water is used, cost of billing, and if it isn't, uh then it allows the customers to go online or do something and get a meter that's not compatible with our software. I mean, if they, if they were going to buy the meter, then they need to at least buy that brand that's compatible with our software.
I think there's a distinction between paying for the meter and furnishing the meter. They pay, but we furnish. Then we always get the meters that we want.
We not charge for new installations, um that's always been kind of a gray area. Somebody builds a new house, and we just hand them a meter and say, you know, you probably put it in with your connection. At one point, we kinda decided it was included in the building permit, there was no specific amount. And we added to the building permit for a meter, and it's a two hundred bucks.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it's out of the question that somebody's building a house that they could, they should be paying for the meter as well in addition to the permit, in addition to everything.
The thing that comes into play in that one, I mentioned slightly, is negligence, uh freezes and breaks. And that brings you back to who owns the pits and who owns the meters and holding on.
Well, it talks about, I gotta get back to it. There's in the damage section, I think it refers to that. I don't know that it's as clear as we need it to be, but um yeah. Each owner or water user must provide at his or her expense a suitable place to keep the water meters safe from damage. So that addresses exactly what you're talking about.
And also needs to be accessible. For repair or replacement or whatever.
Back to uh J.
Constantly having problems with the remotes, you know, they'll have one and then they'll go to pants and get a couple of inches in the plants doves or something, you know?
Yeah, well, it's at the very beginning of, of the whole ordinance, it talks about um. Public Works Director and his or her designees shall have power to enter the premises or buildings of consumers at any reasonable hour for the purpose of reading, removing, installing, testing or repairing meters, or for examining piping. But it addresses that issue there too.
Back to J, you meant, you know, it could be worse than a meter misdemeanor, but what I'm, what I'm thinking here, I don't see it anywhere else in the document to be explicit in that this misdemeanor, if it's something small, but it's gonna, anything with our water system, with the tanks or anything, that would quick, quickly become a federal, federal law issue. So I think it does need to have something in here somewhere that says, you know, this is superseded by state and federal law.
Yes.
Cause I'm pretty sure national security stuff is all over water towers and all that.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of assumptive, if that's even a word, that, that we could impose penalties on a crime that's unknown at this time. You know what I mean? Say it's a misdemeanor or that it's up to thirty days in jail. I mean, if they're gonna do something real bad, they should go to prison for, oh wow.
Well, that's, we're saying, that's the, that's the question. That's where like the double, the double jeopardy issue comes in, you know? I mean, if we charge somebody with something and it was, and we charge and convict, then they're charged and convicted. They can't be charged and convicted. That's why I think we need to have, it needs to have something in there for federal and state law. Just saying that, it's federal and state law supersede this.
We have had instances where people have blatantly stolen water.
And that's like, you know, that's like us to deal with.
I mean, it falls under a civil matter, so then nothing usually happens.
So this references that again on the, the freezing and the accessibility to examination on page eighteen. On the bottom of the page, H. So, so basically, it is. It's another one of these documents that, that refers, references the same thing in several places. And I think that makes it even harder to deal with myself. The shorter, the sweeter. The most defined, yes, no, it's easier to me, but. And, and we're paying for this too. We pay for each page. Go ahead, Chuck.
Home to the access part. A lot of the ones that are installed in crawl spaces, the actual entrance into the crawl space is usually in a closet that's got twenty years of gathering. You know, sometimes it's kinda difficult, but once a little forenotice, or between the cupboard and outside, you have access to closets. Usually they're pretty cooperative on most of it, but of course, you're tramping around in the house, you know, and it's, it's not good. Some of them.
Yeah.
Are underneath a double wide, thirty feet, so you gotta crawl under there through whatever might be under there. Check them or change them or whatever, or have license from or put them in back. Maybe I can throw them on the heel, you know?
Well, that's um, I mean, we can make the requirements or some requirements on where it is put and, you know, the access to it.
It has to be good access. I mean, it can be under, but under a, a double wide, but there has to be an access door in the skirting or whatever that's right next to the meter. So the.
I think that's part.
Most new installations, you know, like, I've been involved in a lot of them, but. Yeah, the ones I'm not, to make the suggestion, just please put a door right there, you know, so.
Well, it's better for them. It's actually better for the homeowner too.
It is.
If it's easy access.
We've got, you know, some that are in meter pits, some are underneath the house, some are in the crawl space, some are in the basement. It just, you know, when you have the remote beat on them, then that takes a lot of the. Yeah, the problems off the picture, you know? We'll, we'll put the meter up and then they'll, like I said, double pens, so then there's no access to the meter.
It's, that's covered in H.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Accessible for examination.
So what we could do is um, and then in case of neglect, refusal to repair, or refusal to pay expenses, or denial of access. The water supply may be turned off and not turned on until such costs are covered and access has been restored, something like that.
Yeah, that's good.
So let us in, or you don't get water? I guess is the simple way to put it.
It's kind of um implied. If your water's not working and you don't let them in to fix it.
Right.
Just got a text from Anthony and he wants to know if we want him via on the phone or whatever. And I think we're okay without him tonight until, yup, okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to double check.
Tell him to enjoy his family time.
He probably has someplace else to go.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, Connie, sorry. My phone calls.
This, I don't know that much about it, but I know Anthony's saying that we're gonna be working on some infrastructure down the road. Will that incorporate the manholes and the meter pits and can they address people's meters at their, in their crawl spaces at that time? Or, I don't know.
There is gonna be work done, obviously. We need that. We know, uh, we wanna get these other projects hopefully done first before there's any issues there. Um, I think it will, the manholes, yes, as far as the meters go, it's gonna depend on whether they're in the manholes or under the home. And um I, I think that it just has to be, this is another part where the um computer programming will, will help because as it's put into the computer each home, it can be put in there, meters in the basement, you know, meters here, meters there. And that will also help, help Public Works. Um, right now, um I don't think anything can be defined as absolutely positively gonna get this done or that done. But yeah, we will be working on it.
Down the road, I just don't know if those would be incorporated in.
A little bit, yes.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know if this is something Anthony's gonna be looking at, but as far as like a policy and procedure for input of data into that system, like what do we expect it, right? What, 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 what would we expect as far as images and so on, documentation? Is that something that they're gonna take care of, or is that something we should?
Well, I think probably that'll be a work session in the future, but like right now, when we're thinking about these things, it should be written down now. A reminder that, uh, you know, um when we're looking at those things, that we need to address.
Cause something like that, it might be good, once that system's in, to have a picture of each person's water meter attached to their property in the system. It's got the capacity, right?
Yup. Cal?
So with, with this, if we adopt this language in here with the duty and responsibility of the occupant or owner to keep this meter safe from damage, A, that's gonna be a advertising campaign probably via the water bills, maybe some signage up here at the door and around and stuff like that. Also, an education campaign's gonna have to be undertaken to make people understand what that means. And then the other thing along with the computer program, we're gonna have to identify um meters that are susceptible to that. And if they don't have power or some other means of keeping those meters warm, then that might be, that's, we need to figure out how that is gonna go because according to this language, they would be responsible for running power there, keeping the heat tape and everything like that, so. And I don't know that that's a huge expense, but you know, that's something that people are gonna have to understand that they will be responsible for unless we come up with a different solution and, you know, per this language, so. And then also to monitor that, to make sure that it's warm and that it's insulated and, and things like that, so.
And so there, there becomes another, well, another issue. I mean, we don't have the funding to make sure that there's an employee to, you know, run around every winter and make sure everybody's is all right.
Right.
I don't, I mean, is it um?
It's on the homeowner.
But it's on the homeowner, yes.
So that, per this language, they would be the ones responsible. And then if it breaks, they're responsible for the cost of the repair. You know, and so um whether Public Works does the repair or not, I think I would prefer Public Works to do the repair to make sure that we have it done right and everything like that.
Well, they either have to do it or inspect it, you know, to make sure that whoever's doing it is, you know, doing it correctly to the towns.
Right, but I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, if we adopt this language, we should not just throw it out there and expect that people do the right thing, that it's gonna take some effort on our part to make people understand they need to work. It's kinda like working with the town, but at the same time, it's hardening their own infrastructure for themselves. And if we have, happen to have a, a meter break there that nobody catches and then we lose a ton of water, I mean, that's gonna affect everybody as well, so, you know, it's. I, I, yeah, I'm just trying to point to that, that, that um, you know, people will have to be more proactive on their own premises.
Yes.
To make sure that.
And I think that this is something I have thought of for a long time and, and it, it got started at one time and then not carried through, I guess. But um basically a homeowner's packet, somebody moving into town that doesn't know all these things. And I think that should be a, um like, like the ordinance should be given to them um and highlighted on like that particular part, portion, you know? These, and this is why it affects you, and it's better.
Like a guy, like here's a guy, here's a guy booked with how to.
Yes, exactly.
And hard.
Yup. So that's a whole nother thing then to do, you know? I mean, that's, that's more paperwork, more, more time, more time for the office staff. But it also would be beneficial, you know, to have it out there. And then you don't have people coming back in and saying, oh, I didn't know this, nobody told me this, um so on and so forth, so. Going back through. So doing it on the opposite end of it, is there anything in the current that is not in the new one that um we think should be in it? So the. The new one is, or the old one is five pages. I'm unhappy with the new one being twenty. We need to consolidate or something here. This, this is not a good thing. So um.
I mean, this may be something that was almost a, like they had a generic document. I mean, this may be something that was almost a, like they had a generic document.
Well, you know, he has done other cities and he's done a little bit bigger cities where probably more is needed and, and of course, if they've. My, my famous thing is, um. It doesn't ever seem to me like anything's in black or white, everything's gray, and that is so that the attorneys can make money. So, it's my opinion, but. And I, but I think that, uh, we can put some time into it and eliminate some of this.
And we, we could just ask him to get rid of some of the repeat language?
Right, yeah, yeah.
To start with, go from there.
Yep. You'll see in the, in our current ordinance, even on the first page, under D, um, how many times it's listed that this has been. The ordinance has been changed and passed, and so. One of them was on four eighteen of twenty-three, so. That's the most recent one I see. And here again, uh, we need to re- remember that we need to look at the, um, fee schedule. To make sure that we're updating that also.
When he sent, Terry, when he sent this over, was he kinda thinking that this was final draft, close to final draft, or this is kinda just?
No, no.
Just, just a start and, and then any recommendations you guys might.
So he rates go up this month on the water bills?
My, it already did.
Now the ten percent goes to, to the May.
May?
Yeah. The twelve eighty went on the February bills, the surcharge. And then a couple months will do the ten percent.
There was that section on drawwater, is that something we want?
Yeah, and I read, I read that too, so I was kinda, I'm reading the same thing.
Seems like just ahead, you know, just. That was an option, we don't have to provide it. Aside from ag, I don't see why anybody would want it all.
Construction. I mean, they don't need it to be all.
So you're reading this versus that, oh my god. So a lot of language in there that we don't know.
I know, there's a lot of language and that's, that, you know. It's, there's absolutely no reason that I can see that we need to pay for nineteen pages, twenty pages of. Documentation here, we need to shrink it. I don't know if I've. I just skimmed over it and missed it, or if it's not in here, did anybody see where, um. There's. Anything about renters and.
I was just reading that, no.
I don't.
When it mentions occupants, you mean renters? Yeah, there's a whole section on accessibility right here.
What change?
This one? That's the best I can do, I mean.
What does it start, what's on the top of the page?
External matters.
External matters?
Matters.
Matters.
Years matters.
Oh, there it is, twelve.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it also says meters shall not be installed in a pit, so we have to.
So that has to come out?
Yeah.
Is that gonna be a remote reading, all meter, all model meters shall be equipped with a remote read from the device? Where it can be read without entering a building?
As soon as we switch to that, yes. Yep. I don't know how long the actual switchover will take.
Right.
Chuck? Got any?
Oh, it usually takes half an hour on the phone move. Install a new component.
In each household?
Yes. Most everything that's on the outside, it's a matter of just replacing the touchpad. And, um. With all the new construction that's coming up, you know, it's nice if we got some kind of standard policy on where meters don't be.
Oh, boy, yes.
You know, cause when they go under double wide and stuff like that, then you're dealing with. Heat tape and there's only one kind of heat tape that's guaranteed for twenty-five, thirty years, you know, and people just neglect that stuff. Uh, horrible, and then when it freezes and breaks and.
I should've changed.
You know, and there's hell in the bay, you know. We had one, this last big freeze up that. A guy went underneath, uh, to work, put on the furnace and on to have the heat tape when he went through and everything, so. Just, I don't know, that's, you know. There's gotta be some kind of standardization where they go. Three street, every one of them are in the crawl space that aren't. Uh, modulars or double wides, it's something about nature. And then most of those are in, are in an insulated container, a box of some sort. Uh, to protect them, but there's still a heat tape required. Not everyone, I was lining up or stuffed in. For the future, you know, uh, I've seen heat tapes as long as thirty, forty feet. You know, but.
So, um, this would need to be then added to the building permit, actually.
I would say so, if there is some standardization of where you're located.
If we can come up with a standard, that will have to be added, changed and added.
And the plumber needs to know that, you know.
And the plumber needs to know that, yeah.
Well, that drove, you know, there. I think there's nine houses there and. I think I put the waters, we were in there, one of them except for one, and, um, they're all standard. I mean, the meters are in the crawl space and the remote's on the front of the house and. They're in a heated environment where they're at, so. And we've got meter pits that's been in for twenty-five, thirty years and never had a problem with them.
Right.
And others, not so.
So do we need something in this for, while we're in the process? Of getting them to where they're all remote read, cause this is basically like right now, everything would have to be remote, so. We can do something.
So that has to be rewritten, so that it accounts for now.
Right.
And, um.
Some kind of an escape.
Mm-hmm. Yes, Cal.
I'd just like to point out in, uh, section fifty twenty of the current ordinance is it, it also has, had, actually has the language that we were discussing earlier about the. Owners slash occupants being responsible for frozen up meters and things like that, so. It's already, uh, been adopted.
Maybe it's easier to say what to, go through the old one. And.
What to add?
Yeah. I mean.
Look at these.
I mean, well, that's what I'm gonna do later is get these two different documents and. Have they go through and give us a summary of the differences and things like that.
That'd be good.
Yeah, so.
Cool reference.
Need to start using those tools.
So, we all know that we need to reread it. Compare it and add and subtract some more, so.
Well, Courtney's wondering if we ask him to cut a lot out. We could end up getting something completely different next time.
I, I know, I know, and so that's, I think it just needs to definitely be a little more direction. Uh, you've got a whole bunch there that needs to come out and be added also, and, uh.
Yeah, so I think the first thing we need to do is coalesce all of our lists together on the.
Yes.
The changes that we know about right now, and just have them. In one spot, per se.
Yep.
Then we, uh, do some more study, come back in, go over it again, and, um. Maybe after that, we'll be ready to submit changes to me.
Another, um, question from Anthony, he wants to know if, uh, we will. We will be discussing, uh, the Madison well today, D N and R was asking about it today.
It's not really.
What were they asking about it?
Well, I don't know.
Well, that might be. Might be some, something that we should know. What threat was that?
Specifically?
Yeah.
I talked to him yesterday, um.
Anthony?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he was saying he was going to go with requesting three seventy-five on the water permit.
Three seventy-five?
Come back and say, alright, well, here's five hundred. But, and our, the casing, as of right now, the casing we ran through with the engineer is only gonna give us, I think it's three seventy-five, maybe three twenty-five, either way, regardless of what. They think we can get, that's the casing we're looking at as of right now.
Okay, so. That brings us to the next, kinda, to the next work session, um. Which will be the twenty-fifth of this month. And so we'll have further discussion on the war- water ordinance. Pardon me?
I said, and the board meetings on the eighteen.
Yep, my regular meeting on the eighteen, yep. And. Then, at that time, I believe we'll need to go through the, um, the applications for law enforcement. It'll be. At that, that time will be up for. Getting in applications. And then depending on how much time we have, and, um, but we need to get started on the, um. The lilac. Yeah.
Abatements.
Abatements, and, yep, mm-hmm. On, on that particular ordinance, so. And I think that would be a great plenty for that meeting, um. The applications, uh. We can read ahead of time in the office here. Um, there are, I think, six of them, six of them, it's awesome.
So far.
Yeah, so far, so, um, I would just.
Liz called me or texted me, I says, why are you interested?
Who?
Liz, when I lived in our house, the shirt.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, she says, have you found somebody? I said, no, do you know of somebody, or are you interested?
Okay. Is she working, or?
Yeah, she's back to work.
Part-time or full-time?
I don't, she was about for, full-time.
Did she?
Yeah.
Okay, good for her. Um. And like I said, I, that'll be enough and maybe even too much for a work session, depending on how much more we have in the, in the water ordinance. Applications, like I said, if we all have them read and have comments, questions written out and ready, that won't be too bad. We'll need to decide at that point, um, when we'll be doing interviews, um. How many interviews we wanna do, you know, we'll go through the, there may be some that, that we don't even feel like we need to interview. But we're also gonna have to then decide as a board exactly what it is that we are looking for. Um, the, um, part-time basis, I think we were down to, uh, we could afford. Twenty hours a week, I think is the average.
Fifteen to twenty.
And so we'll have those figures, um, redone and so that everybody will know and understand that. And, uh. And then the next one after that, just so everybody knows, um, will probably be, um, office staff. The applications for that, so. So we're kinda planned out already, um, for the next two for sure, and, uh. And then there's always a possibility, one never knows, if something will happen that makes something else more important than everything else, so. Uh, but I think we're pretty well lined out. Today, um, unless there's anything anybody else would like to discuss. Or bring up as far as what would be in the future. Meetings or any other. Questions, and see if I, oh, I haven't gotten a reply from Anthony yet.
Uh, he, I, yeah, I talked to him for like an hour, he also said, um. The lagoons are moving forward, he's looking at the, um. The retention basin, um, being ready to go, he said, within a couple of weeks, hopefully. And then the, um, discharge permit mid-April. So. He's really, really focused on that, but he said he'll be, he'll be able to start branching out on other things.
How did the snow making go, Chuck?
He said it was a joke.
Almost total failure.
Almost a total failure, and is that because of the weather and the temperatures?
Well, there was a couple things that came into play that, um, they had to have a booster pump that, um. That departure pump. And with no filtration on it, of course, why, then it got clogged and.
Yes.
Didn't work and, um, it's more of an aeration thing than the snowmaking that. That's kind of a five-figure, I mean, it, they do work in certain circumstances, it's not the idea. They do work in certain circumstances, it's not the ideal thing for what we have. Uh, we'd be way better off with ariators in pond, uh, which we've looked at those in the past.
Mm-hmm.
We do have an agitator and a treatment, uh, in Pond A. We're still surcharging Pond B, uh, trying to stay ahead of the crowd here.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh, uh... Service kinda had, um... We lost nineteen thousand yard of dirt somewhere. Pretty fair amount. Um, figures were rechecked and pebbled checked and whatever, um... I don't know if staking was wrong or what happened, but I think most of it got burnt up in the berms. They're much bigger and wider than what was originally planned. They've got a big high truck builder in there now that's are shaving some of that off of the sides, we needed quite a bit of fill for the treatment plant. And, uh... I think I burned up four loads off of our big haul truck. I don't know exactly what that haul was, I think it was eighteen ton, eighteen, twenty ton at a time. Um, the dirt, clean dirt, working very well, we've got, uh... Inside of the building, uh, had to have quite a bit of fill, last year, compacted and where's the stage right now where subgrade, um, gravel will go in to accept the floor drain, drainage package. And, um... I kinda thought maybe they were gonna set raptors, but I don't know.
It's a big...
Doesn't happen to us, there seems to be, you know, legs are beating a little on the building. If water permitting, you know, we can operate that machine, however, we're still, as service indicated, we're still wrestling with the permit.
Yes.
And, um... Obviously, once the water's treated, then it could be put on the alfalfa field that is nearby, which would breed probably three cuttings a year, which is dry, dry land now. But once it's treated, now that's what the permit's for, is to discharge in the bathroom
Right.
if it's not landified.
Right.
And, uh, so making progress all the way around, you know, I mean, we're on B as full hope and then, um... We're hoping that, um, Rob is gonna get his end done there, talking like they probably are going to attack the bentonite thing next, next week. Uh, running into Snag and Halliburton bought that bentonite out and that's kinda disrupted plans all the way around. Have another source to get it a little further away, but, um... It's much better deal, it doesn't test quite as good performance-wise as stuff out of...
So what you're telling me is that Halliburton bought their entire stock, there's nothing available?
They bought the company, so...
They bought the company out?
Regulation, they're a little different. And, uh, they don't like to load semi's only certain hours of the day. And, uh, blackbets, which probably be end up happening as a load that on blackbet, it goes in the building to be unloaded. Now, the new company that we've contacted, uh, like I said, it's gonna take a little more bentonite than what you would from the source from Halliburton because it's not quite the quality those samples have been sent in. Uh, to see how much is going to have to be used to obtain the same quality of sealing.
Seal, mm-hmm.
They're moving tremendous amount of, uh, that's just unbelievable coming. And I probably put a hundred and fifty, two hundred ton today around the treatment plant and inside and that all has to be brought up three and a half feet from ground level. And I said, "Well, you know, I was here in nineteen seventy-two and also two thousand seven and other than infiltration, that was, never got any water in it from the flood."
Right.
The figures that FEMA has are saying that, you know, we need to raise to a size thirty inches or something, or on a dirt, on a dirt.
Yeah, well, FEMA has the power.
Battling along every day. Kinda closer and closer.
Good, thank you. Aaron?
Yeah, just on the, uh, snow machine, so we haven't gotten the favorable cold that we wanted to, to make snow. Uh, he did, I think he said he got about, Anthony said they got about six feet, but, um... They realized and they, he did some looking into, and just, just running the system, they can get up to ten percent of volume in evaporation. So he moved over to Pond B to try to evaporate that out, so they're pumping out of Pond B, but they, they are, they're just, their plan is to just keep trucking, whether they're making snow or just evaporating, but, so the really hot days are good for us for evaporation, the really cold days will do us for snow, but he said we're doing all right now and as long as everything keeps going with the, with the Ben's basin and it gets, it stays on this timeline and we shouldn't have any issues and we shouldn't need to truck.
Yep.
Which is...
Awesome.
Yes.
Absolutely awesome, yes.
Keystone falling through really didn't burn us as bad as it would have.
Nope, nope.
What happened with Keystone?
They have the issue of their own, and I don't know what it is. Um... I have enough problems overall, I don't even know theirs. So, yeah, I don't know, but it was definitely an issue in their, at their end, so...
Problem if I can't even take sewage from someone else?
Yeah, yeah, so... Okay, um... This is a short meeting, um, which is kinda nice, I think the next one will be quite a bit longer with the, um... with the ordinances on it and everything, um, I'd like to think, yes, Deb?
This isn't on the agenda, but I was just wondering if you guys are thinking about the cleanup next month?
We haven't discussed that yet. That's a good point, thank you.
In April, they do it in Rapid, so...
Uh, what day is it in Rapid? The... Probably the nineteenth, I'm guessing, it's their free weekend. Well, um, we'll need to know that.
When is Easter?
Um... Easter's the twentieth, I think, oh, so it won't be that weekend then. Right?
Probably twenty-sixth, that would guess.
Yeah. Anyway, we'll find out when that is. Uh, does everybody feel like that is a project we should do again this year?
Oh, yes, most definitely.
Always, yes.
Always, good. That there's no disagreements there, that, it's a good thing for the town.
Town beautification.
And... Yeah, we'll put that on the agenda, yes. Um, Dan, are you willing to help out with that again, with the loader and squishing it down and all that?
The boss says yes.
Thank you, boss. So, good for the town, it, it's helpful, um... All right, we, we will look into that, hopefully have that information by the next meeting, um... Anything from anybody else, citizens, questions, Dan?
Um, in this last snow roll, I noticed there's an awful lot of damage. Wondering if that sod's gonna be put back before it's wasted into the spots that it was ripped up and gravel cleaned out before the soil did so bad that it can't be cleaned out. I noticed the streets that weren't plowed are really nice and the snow melted actually faster and no damage, but the damage that's accrued is every intersection. Lot of driveways, lot of grass.
There's a lot of mess, right on my street and corner, it, it is, you know, um... Also, the gravel is in the yards and that all needs to be cleaned up. Chuck, are you, uh, um, foresee any time this week to work on that?
Probably, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We usually do.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, just questioning. Try to get to that and we'll keep an eye on that, thank you.
Oh, I thank you, and the sod is
The big thing?
Probably my biggest thing because otherwise, we're gonna have weeds if it's not put back in its spot.
Weeds.
Thank you. Anybody else, questions, comments? Yes, Connie?
I was just curious where the bulk water is located now.
It is down at the...
In the playgrounds?
No, we're getting it over here by the community center.
The quarries again, that hydrant, that fire hydrant or what?
Yeah, they're getting the water for it, there was a project there.
I just remembered in the past, I don't know how many people I caught stealing water, 'cause nobody from the town board was there to monitor it. One guy rolled off Highway forty and thirty-six, he was spilling his sister's and his neighbor's and...
When was that?
Last summer.
Yeah.
Was that just last summer?
And the summer before even.
Yeah, I remember it, the summer before, but...
To be a board member and somebody from public works there to watch it.
Wait, what time of day was that?
It was during the day, started in the morning and they came into town on Whitney. And I'd watch them go over there and pretty soon they'd call another load, fold back out and...
Well, how is, uh, hydrant secured normally?
Well, that takes a wrench to open them, obviously, but pipe wrench will do. Get a pinch.
Well, if you see that again, give me a call, go over there, issue them a citation or something.
Wouldn't be too hard to set up a camera.
Yeah?
One of the other things that I was gonna mention, when, when Cory had help.
Go ahead.
Uh, Danny Ayers was here today.
Oh.
And, uh, he was at the Lagoon and took a little turn around and I'd indicated to him that, uh, you know, we didn't get much publicity for the kind of money we're spending over there, so he indicated that he probably would do an article in the Rural Water Magazine.
Oh, that's nice.
So, anyway, he left things over pretty good.
Good.
And he would just think it was his turn to be here.
That's good.
He's been very helpful in the past with a lot of stuff. He's the Silver Side of Rural Water.
Right, right. Okay, Dan, you had?
Yeah, another item I know when Connie brought it up was, there was a big issue about the backflow preventer being on that fire hydrant also. Whenever there was any water being taken out of it and there's never been one on, and I know also what Connie was referencing, the wrench was actually left on, the fire hydrant day and night for weeks on turn there and I thought the policy was that there is supposed to be somebody there when it's being taken, but I think the backflow preventer is, like I think it was brought up, regulation that it's supposed to be put on, so...
If they have a stop gap on the truck that they're using, then, uh, that is not really necessary. The only people that have any permission at all to get water is the ones from the Silver Project Lagoon. So if anybody else has seen there, they need to be reported immediately, not days later.
All right. Um, you got something else?
Um, I, I don't know if we're going through this, like, are we gonna trust the input or we're just gonna...
Well, you can trust the input if you'd like, I would like to mention, uh, first off, that, uh, um, the cameras are up and running now. Um, it will not be posted on to, um, the website yet. We're gonna, you know, make sure that all the bugs are, um, out of it and we know how to run it and everything first, but, um... Tonight's meeting is the first time that the camera actually is on, so, um, yeah. Yay, hi.
I can actually, um,...
Sure, go for it.
So that's the view?
So you can see that, uh, we got the TV moved over, um, we felt that was necessary 'cause it's easier for the audience to see now. It's up a little higher and over, over our heads, uh, so...
Um, not as much as you'd think.
And there's the one camera that pretty much focuses on the podium for when people are up and discussing, so... You're the first, welcome to being a camera. Thank you. Um, I swear I hit something else and it's gone, so... Would like to thank you all for coming tonight, um, we will have another meeting next, regular meeting next Tuesday night and then following boards, uh, work session two weeks from tonight, so, thank you all.